Do I have to turn my notes? Okay. At this time, I'd like to call order the Gold Hill Planning Commission meeting Wednesday, fifteenth, twenty twenty-four. Uh, roll over please.
Commissioner Warwick?
Here.
Commissioner Skunover?
There.
Commissioner Hammond?
Yeah.
Commissioner Bregrin?
No. Counselor.
Counselor Bregrin? Commissioner Hesley?
Here.
Thank you.
Good. Uh, next on the agenda of public comment. Not related to the public hearing, it looks like. That one. So, uh. We'll move to, at this time, like open the public hearings. To consider an application CUP twenty-four dash zero one. The application, the application is for a conditional use permit to allow expansion of a non-conforming use. Use is considered non-conforming because it is a residential use in a public zone. Property is located at three sixty Riverside Avenue, Gold Hill. The legal description is thirty-six dash three W dash common two V B. Back slot seventy-seven hundred. The applicant is proposing in addition to the main floor of the dwelling, in addition to the base. The application further includes the demolition slash construction of a new carport. We will begin the hearing with a staff report, followed by a presentation by the applicant. Statements by persons in favor of the application, statements by person in opposition to the application. And an opportunity for additional comments by the applicant and staff. After that has occurred, the public comment portion will be closed. And the matter will be discussed and then acted upon by the commission. Objections to jurisdiction, is there anyone present who wishes to challenge the authority of the commission to hear this matter? None. Abstentions. Do any commissioners wish to abstain from participating in this hearing or declare potential conflict of interest? No. Prior ex parte contacts by commissioners, are there any commissioners who wish to disclose discussions, contacts, biases, or other ex parte information they have received prior to this meeting regarding the application? Um, I would disclose that I briefly discussed with Counselor Bergeron the application last night. And I discussed the staff report with you today, this morning. Just the two of us. So. Uh, anybody else? I've been a while since we've got. Okay. Um, okay, uh, I guess we'll move to staff report.
Certainly, thank you. Good evening, Commissioners, Chandel Clark and Rogue Valley Council of Governments. And, um, the item before you again includes a conditional use permit to allow the expansion of a non-conforming use. The use is located at three sixty Riverside Avenue. Uh, through this request, the applicant is seeking to add approximately eighty-eight square feet to the main floor of the residence. Seventeen square feet to the basement and the new carport measuring five hundred and thirty-six square feet. Uh, which is approximately six feet larger than the original carport. Uh, the request was originally scheduled for hearing on April seventeenth, however, due to a noticing error, it was continued to tonight's meeting. Um. In your packets, you'll find correspondence that staff received from the public on April seventeenth. Regarding the current use of the property. Uh, in your packet, you will also find a letter from the contractor stating the property is and will be used as a residential dwelling. As a residential dwelling, staff is able to recommend approval because the use is considered existing, non-conforming, the dwelling dates back to nineteen seventy-four. Um, and the expansions do not exceed the thresholds identified in the code. Therefore, staff has recommended approval of the application with the following conditions. First, the use is as a residential dwelling. Second, permits, the applicant shall receive all required permits from Jackson County Building Division. And third, encroachments, the proposed carport expansion shall not approach upon the neighboring property located at forty-three Darpenell Street. This concludes staff's report and I am available to answer any questions.
When are they adding new questions?
I have a question for clarification. I don't know if that's appropriate.
Sure.
Okay, Chair.
Sure, yeah. Uh, go ahead, Emily.
Um, I heard that it's. I mean, some of the testimony was related to if it's used as a vacation rental. And I think I heard you say that it's used as a residential. Is there a difference?
There's a difference definitely in the code there. The code has two separate, um, items. One is vacation rental dwelling called out separately, and then there's single family dwellings called out separately. There's also multi-unit dwellings. So when the application materials were, um, delivered, uh, the application was considered incomplete. Because I needed a narrative from the agent, uh, which in this case is the contractor. And in that narrative, the contractor is where he stated that the use was residential in nature. Uh, as a single family dwelling. And that it would continue to be residential in nature.
And a residential dwelling, they've turned into an Airbnb?
They would have to, the applicant would have to apply for special use.
So that was the question I had with that, that three, uh, public comment that was submitted.
Right.
And they say all of them. Seem to indicate that it's being used in an Airbnb.
Uh, exactly. And what my hope was for this evening was that the folks that commented would, would, uh, attend the public hearing so that they could have the opportunity to get. Their, um, information into the public record other than just the, the written letters.
Right, right. Okay. Yeah, but I think that, I mean, parking is a problem, uh. With the existing Airbnb, so guess. But one of the complaints, you know, the people who's complaining is. Basically shut off a huge chunk of parking on Darpenell's. I mean. That is the used town.
I.
I mean, that's. He's, he's closed off the whole. River end of.
I, I want to caution that that's not, um, relevant to the application.
Well, but it's relevant to the parking. I mean, if, if the objections are coming from parking. Then, and one of the people who's objecting is saying there's none of parking. And he's sitting on fifteen parking, public parking places. There is a point where, I mean, it, it's completely relevant to say, boy, this actually, this is. There's, you can't complain about the lack of park, you know, of somebody. Creating a parking problem if you're the person who's created it by, by taking the public land that would be used for parking. I, I think it's pretty straightforward. Well, I, I kind of see this as two separate issues. Well, it's separate issues, but they're all related. And what I think, uh, uh, but I think, I mean, I think in terms of this, we have no way, I mean. It's a single, but, but, you know, it's, the house is existing, it's in need of improvement from having been in it. Uh, having been in those rooms, it's a simple fix. It's really nice. I mean, I haven't, I haven't looked at that closely, but I, I mean, it's a, it's a good thing for the, for the neighborhood.
Can I, can I ask for, I'm gonna do it real quick. I, um, Commissioner, I just heard you say that you've been in the home?
Years ago.
Okay, I just want to make sure that it's when we ask for conflict or ex parte contact.
I said, yeah, I said.
That you've been in the home? I'm sorry. So I have had a conversation directly with. The owner who explained to me what was going on in the house. Would that be appropriate for me to offer in testimony or as an extension of staff?
As an extension of, as an extension of staff, we can't enter that testimony.
When the time comes, I should do that. I mean, when that appropriate time for me to add information for, to be considered, I think is appropriate.
I think the, the issue really is here that the application that was submitted does not reflect the actual use of the property. I think that's where it went awry.
Right.
That's, that they should have submitted the application and stating, um. If it is a vacation rental or an Airbnb, that should have been the application material. And when I asked for the written narrative, had that been part of the written narrative, then you would have proceeded with it as a vacation rental. So I feel that, um, what needs to occur is they need to apply as the vacation rental. If that's truly what it is intended for.
So for clarification, what I think I heard you say is they applied as a single-family residence. You asked for clarification, they stayed as that.
Correct.
There may be public testimony via written form. That is provided that something else might be going on.
Right.
And I would have additional information that I would offer based on a conversation. Uh, that if it's appropriate to share, would attest to that as well.
Again, the.
But the planning commission would still have to decide. Based on the course of what recommendations to do.
Right, right. And again, I think the, the real crux of the issue is the fact that it's the wrong application.
Well, it, it's not the wrong application if it's going to go, going to be a single family.
Correct.
Correct.
If it's going to be a single family dwelling, then, then.
Sure, the, the condition.
Then the condition. Then it's a single family dwelling and it's precedable.
Right.
Um, if their intent is that they want a vacation rental dwelling, then that's where the issue arises.
And how, go ahead, Emily.
I'm just wondering. When is appropriate for me to share the information I received from the applicant?
I would share it now.
Okay, may I? Uh, so I had contacted the applicant or the homeowner to offer clarification. Uh, to allow, to explain the zoning and what was up and to give an opportunity for that. And what it was explained to me is the house has been used. Uh, it is the first Airbnb that was registered in Gold Hill and has been used as a vacation rental since, uh. Since we started doing those. Uh, at the current moment, she has blocked off that time from that and has a long-term rental and part of the place. But intended to remodel a second part for her to move into. I don't know if having two residences inside still counts as a single-family dwelling. But she did clarify, there's two living quarters. Within the property. One that has been used as a vacation rental. For several years and is registered with a business license with the city. And, but currently has. A non, um, vacation rental person staying in it for a long term. Uh, but that she. The other portion that she's wishing to remodel is, is for a single-family dwelling for her portion, but. The building itself has two living quarters in it.
So ultimately, it's not going to be an Airbnb? Is that the indication?
She has it still posted on Airbnb, but she blocked off dates for four months.
And so is it a single-family residence that has, but can that have two?
It's considered a multi-unit residential.
Yeah.
Yeah, dwelling. Because that's two units.
Okay, and that, that's legal?
Yes.
Under a single-family dwelling permit?
Under, under the ancillary, uh, dwelling units, yes. It would be considered legal non-conform.
Okay.
So. Again, the way, the way I can see this, uh, the conditions of the staff report are met. And, and the public testimony, the written testimony against. Is related to complaints about it being an Airbnb. So. An affordability is licensed as an Airbnb. It has the registration and everything.
So. So the conditions that staff offered that meet the conditions is as a single-family dwelling.
Right.
If that's all it is.
Correct.
The. Advertising of the property is in your packet as submitted by neighbors.
Yeah.
And was verified that, yes, it is still listed. It was just the dates were blocked off. As it's currently being used by a friend for a few months. But it's not been removed from Airbnb advertising. It's still a unit that someone could. Potentially rent after four months down the road.
I was told by. The owner that she at times has used it as an Airbnb and at times as her residence. Subjected to the convenience of availability as a. Vacation rental, apparently she lives in Rogue River, whether it had a place. That she would relocate to Rogue River. That's what I was glad I heard.
So I just want to make sure that we've disclosed ex parte contact with the applicant.
And this is years ago. When I rented from her. Airbnb that she had on Riverside.
Okay. Um.
I, I've got a thought, which is that. I think that. Who we are, um. The application as submitted is firstly, it is. It's, it's complete and we can. For, yeah, for residents. Yeah, for residents. And there's another issue about whether it's a, um. An Airbnb, but that's. That's not, I mean, for us to set, for us to decide right now, we can.
It is.
Well, right. So, so I guess we can move forward with a, if it is a single-family residence. And, and approve it as that.
But if you have evidence to the contrary of what the application states, you shall consider that.
Right. So, so this would be a question, um. If. The application was approved as submitted, does that? As a single-family residence, does that preclude them from? And what? To be honest, I'm not familiar with what the City Kevin says regarding Airbnbs. And is that a separate issue or? If, if we need to. Settle this. SFR Airbnb issue. Do we need to? Uh, table this until we get more clarification because.
Uh, what I heard staff say, and correct me if I'm wrong, that if. They are in fact operating it as an Airbnb, then a separate application should have been submitted. That would have been for a remodel of an Airbnb vacation rental in the zoning. That would have to be addressed if the zoning allows it and if there's other circumstances, for instance, of. Pre-existing non-conforming use in the zoning. However. As it was applied for was as a single-family address in, in. Um, stating it's not an Airbnb.
Correct.
So then you as a quasi-judicial body have to weigh the evidence before you. That is presented, is it an Airbnb? And is it not? If she applied for it to not be, but it is, are you disregarding evidence?
Right.
Or are you on the path it goes? Any decision that you make is appealable.
Mm-hmm.
And so if you say, well, she applied as this and that's what we're going to do. And there's evidence that was brought up in writing that it is, there's grounds to appeal based on that or vice versa.
Right. But. The plan seems to me pretty clear that it's intended through an order plus a guess.
Right.
So is this, is this a fraudulent application?
I'm not going to use that word. What I heard staff say is they believe they use the wrong application.
Yeah. Cool. Good, what is the, um. Would an Airbnb, you know, uh, be permitted in, in this situation?
If we could prove that it was pre-existing non-conforming, yes.
Well.
If it was there prior to the public zoning placed over it. And they have the, um, business license and proof of operation, then we could prove that.
Can I edit that a little?
Sure.
If it was operating as an Airbnb. It was public zoning already, but before the restriction in the public zoning was imposed on it. If it was operating before the public restriction, but as it is right now. You have an application for a single-family dwelling. Basically saying it's not an Airbnb and you have testimony via writing. And if there's public testimony to that. That's all things that you as a commission have to weigh and balance in a quasi-judicial fashion to make a judgment on.
So what happened? We approved it as a single-family dwelling? And it turns out to be an Airbnb. What, is there an enforcement action or something?
So any citizen in the area can bring up the evidence that was presented. That countered an appeal. And if it is appealed to the Land Use Board of.
It would go to the city council.
It'd go to city council first and the city council can either affirm or override. If then it could be appealed to the Land Use Board of Appeals. Who, if they found that something was considered or not considered, they can remand it back. To the Council of Planning Commission to overturn and do a different outcome.
Would they reapply? Could the individual reapply? With a permit? Different than what this is?
They could reapply for the, yes, they could reapply.
Yes, um, so if that were the case, then it could be, they could reapply and use it as the, the RBO.
They, yes, they can. Now, there's no guarantee of approval, of course. We have to analyze it with the, with the. Code says so.
And, but if, but if they inferred that they had, they paid. It was on the books somewhere within the city. They pay.
They have a business license with the city to operate an Airbnb.
But, okay, so that side. For that specific site, so just. As a matter of procedure, we're sort of been deliberating here. Do we want to close the public hearing? Are we past that point? Or are we at? Testimony in favor and in opposition? Are we, for, for a lot of closed public hearings? Cause we've al, we've already been kind of deliberating.
Right.
I want to make sure that.
The point. Yeah.
Okay.
Um.
But it, it just seems to me if it's already operating as Airbnb. Okay? And, and. That's the difference. And if, and if that's, that's what we're saying and. And. Then the question is, well, should that continue to operate? And, and why is that continuing to operate? If it's not permitted? Um, but then as far as what we're doing. You know, ultimately, that, the city's better off if the house is improved. Whatever the use is. And, and then there's, there is certain evidence that it has been, it, it was, if there was a legal application to be an Airbnb at some point. Is that right?
That's what the applicant told me. I, I can't, I can't verify. That.
So.
I'm saying it's what she said, that she has. A business license there, not an application, but a business license. So, so the other thing I, I heard staff say was. The two dwelling, David, that you had asked about was. An approved lawful use as an accessory dwelling. Separate from the vacation rental piece. So as the application of single-family dwelling. The two kitchens is.
It's a multi, it's considered multi-unit because it has two kitchens, yes.
Isn't this be approvable as, as an Airbnb?
That, that I would have to analyze the code and I can analyze the code for that.
I just get the impression that not all the facts are presented here. Well, I was thinking maybe we could just table this and have her. Maybe reset or change the application if this is what she intends. Pretty obvious from the, from the plan that she was setting.
So. So the applicant was aware there was a hearing tonight? The contractor was aware there's a hearing tonight? We, I do not believe. We have lawful restrictions on timing.
Sure.
That we have to process and. The timing of putting it off from the hearing last month is already put us. At a spot with our timing. It is not for us to. I mean, you, you can make a recommendation, but we have to either approve or deny or. Make a recommendation or, I mean, staff can offer your options for that based on what's presented, not from what ifs of the applicant might do. Because, and they had the opportunity to be here and take part, either the contractor or the applicant.
So it's. Okay, we're going straight with the application.
Which is what we're supposed to do.
Okay, then, then it's for a single-family residence that is, it's a conforming use and it's to, and it's to maintain that. And, and it sounds to me then the discussion earlier on, it's an Airbnb, Airbnb is irrelevant.
No. That's not what we said.
Can I interrupt?
No.
Oh my God, sorry.
You missed the opportunity for the public comment. Um. So you're affirming that if their applicant is. Actual or not. Not what they say, but if you have evidence of something else, you are required to take that into consideration.
Both there. I mean, if there's a, so. Just to back up, should we close the public hearing since we're, we've already been deliberating?
Yes, the public.
Okay. At this time, I'm going to close the public hearing, uh, and we're going to continue to deliver it since. But what I see. Again, we, the, the conditions in the application as stated as a single-family residence, conditions. The zoning conditions are met for approval. If it's going to be used as a single-family residence. And. My thought would be if we approved that as such, that's. All that it could, should be used for. Would that be correct? Because. There, I would imagine there would be other zoning. Is there, are there other zoning ordinances that would apply to an Airbnb that they may have to satisfy if? Cause we're, we're, we would be approving a conditional use permit for a SFR. Not for Airbnb.
Right.
So if we approved this application. As submitted and approved in the staff report. To me, that's all that that. Property can be used for, same that really. Yeah, I mean, and so I think. And, and if they're going to use it as an Airbnb, they're going to have to come back and reapply. Yeah, they'll have to get, and get a, get permission for an Airbnb. I have no problem just accepting it as a. You know, accepting the application as a. I mean, we're kind of, to be put between a rock and a hard place.
And I heard staff. Say what, I mean. Never mind, I. Uh, you, you don't have the authority to restrict if you have evidence that is presented that it's different than the application. You have to consider the evidence.
I.
As part of the application.
I, I actually, I'm actually. I'm getting to.
The planning commission does not get to set policy? The policy is outlined in the.
The city manager is, is not the planning commission. The planning commission is a, is a, is a, is a body that can make decisions by itself. And whether or not those decisions are upheld. Is, is not for the city manager to decide in meeting. I, I, I think, I think, I think you're overstepping your, your role as a, as.
So I'm an extension of staff that is a part of presenting.
Okay.
And. As such, you do have the rights to do things, but when staff is advising. That things are to be considered, you have a right to still make motions and go down that path.
Right. Still, you're inferring that. Because there was some action prior to where it was used at the VRBO. You have to accept that possibility and legitimate?
I'm saying you have evidence that was submitted. In your packet. As part of the hearing that you have to take into consideration. You're, you're not allowed to contribute.
So. So question for Chandel.
Fair.
Is. Is there any information regarding the Airbnb? I don't know if that came in later, prior to you doing your staff report. Is there anything? Regarding that information that would change your staff report?
The letters came in on April seventeenth.
Okay.
The night of our continued hearing. And I did not change my staff report because I was basing it off of the application materials as submitted.
Right.
So staff doesn't do the reports based on the evidence provided. Staff does the report based on the application.
Yes.
The commission in a quasi-judicial function. That's why you have a public hearing. The public can offer testimony in support or opposed. There can be evidence presented that in addition to the staff report, you consider the evidence and the testimony presented. Then you deliberate and you make your decision.
Question. If, if we approve this as a single-family dwelling and it's operated as an Airbnb, what are the, what are the consequences? What's happening?
I believe I advised that earlier.
Well, that would have to be addressed later. I would think. Yeah.
An enforcement, but it's also, uh, it, I believe becomes a level that somebody could appeal based on.
Yeah. Well, that's only if, if it continues as an Airbnb. If it doesn't, then it's not.
Well, basically what I'm hearing is we kind of prove it as a residential and they can do whatever they want. Because they have operated as an Airbnb prior to all of this. Is that what you're saying?
You can make a decision and make a recommendation. And it either will or will not be appealed, and at that time, the council will consider it. You have, all you're required to do is review what's before you and make the best decision based on what the policies and the laws are and what's presented to you. And then what happens next, happens next, one way or the other. It's not for this body to decide what the consequences are.
So what, what happens if, if we denied this?
Um. They, yeah, they have the opportunity to appeal, just, just like anybody else.
And they would appeal it as, or would they come back? Could they then come back and say, well, we actually want to do this for Airbnb?
Yes, they could. It's, it would be denied without prejudice.
So they have not done any construction because they're waiting for this approval.
Correct.
So that's all the, um so if we deny this, like, I feel like we're between a rock and a hard place, because like you said, we have evidence to the contrary, so.
But as a judge on the bench, you get away the balance of the evidence you have and the applications such. So all I'm saying is you have to consider it. You can't choose to not consider. But you have a right to make the motions and move forward based on what you have before you.
But if, but the, the other thing that you guys, if it is operated in Airbnb right now and it's, and the building is suboptimal, um, and so by denying it, it will continue to operate as an Airbnb in a suboptimal, uh, condition. Have we done any good by denying it? Or should we say, well, chances are it's going to become, it's, 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 it's saying it's going to be a single family, but maybe it's going to turn into an Airbnb, go back to being an Airbnb, but it will be a better building and the community, community will be better off than with the existing building. And because it sounds like there's no enforcement to stop the Airbnb, Airbnb anyway, so you know, we're fighting over over semantics when what we want to do is actually improve the neighborhood with a better building. So, uh, you know, I just I, I, I don't, um, I, I think it should, it's better probably to approve it and then to have the people who complain actually solve their parking problems by, by creating access to the public space that they are keeping up with their, with the private stuff and solve rather than this problem. So.
The only caution I would offer is the planning commission is not the policymaker or the lawmaker of the city.
Right.
We, you, in a quasi-judicial function, can only review the application and the, the evidence and the testimony before you and respond on that information. It's, it's not anything else that can weigh in on the topic than what is offered in the quasi-judicial function of a planning commission.
I think we're at the point where I believe it's necessary that we approve it from the single family that's
I don't want to, that's mine, yeah. I let it go at that.
So there are a couple recommendations of wording.
Yep.
Either way, there's different ways you can go based on where you'd want on the second, on page three, that are some potential.
I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion. Uh, I move that the planning commission approved the application CUP twenty-four dash zero one as conditioned to allow the expansion of a non-conforming use for property located at three sixty Riverside Avenue, Gold Hill, legally described as thirty-six dash three W dash twenty-two VB, tax lot seventy-seven hundred. You have a second? I seconded it. Been moved and seconded?
No more discussion?
Oh, any discussion?
Any other discussion?
Yeah, any additional to that?
Same now.
Okay, uh, hold call, please.
Commissioner Warway?
Uh, yes.
Commissioner Skinner?
Yes, no.
Commissioner Keesley?
Yes.
Commissioner Hammond?
No.
Can you clarify Skinner's vote?
Commissioner Skinner, can I clarify your vote?
I said yes.
Okay. He doesn't. Motion carries.
Motion carries. Go ahead, dear. So we want to go ahead with the public hearing for the next.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Okay.
Absolutely.
Okay, uh, this time I'd like to open a public hearing to consider zoning code amendment twenty-four dash zero one. The amendment is designed to address standards and criteria regarding mobile food vendors. Specific sections proposed for modifications are seventeen twenty-eight oh two oh J, seventeen thirty-two oh two oh A three F,
Yes.
seventeen thirty-six oh two oh C two D, and seventeen thirty-six oh nine oh H. Minor changes to table seventeen twenty-six oh two oh C are also recommended.
Mister Chair, I'm gonna interrupt. I'm gonna ask that you table this for a moment or, um, close this. If you've opened it, we need to close it. There's one more item that needed to be addressed before we move on.
Oh, okay. Uh, we'll close the public hearing.
On the zoning amendment twenty-four, I'm sorry, one.
Did I, is something on you?
If, uh, so I apologize, uh, under tab three, there's a resolution that, um, is not actually on the agenda, but was in the packet.
Yes.
Uh, and if it wasn't in the agenda, does it fall under the hearing still?
It does fall under the hearing and in order to approve a conditional use permit, you must do so by resolution.
Okay, so do they need to reopen the hearing? Or just and read the resolution?
We would to be safe, I would reopen the public hearing. And then read the resolution into the, into the record.
Oh, so you're saying they should have read the resolution? Okay.
And then there would need to be a motion on the resolution.
Okay. So do we want to, let's reopen the public hearing on resolution CUP twenty-four dash zero one. Um. Do we want to, can we rescind the previous vote? Or we just read the resolution and vote? Yeah.
Are they separate issues?
We, as, well, it is the approval of the CUP is the resolution.
Okay.
So it would be read the resolution and then we would do the vote again.
Okay. So a resolution approving a conditional use permit to allow expansion of a non-conforming use. Whereas application CUP twenty-four dash zero one was submitted for review on March eleventh, twenty twenty-four. And whereas said application was deemed complete, the planning staff on March twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four. And whereas the application is considered an expansion of a non-conforming use because the dwelling is located in the public zoning district, uh, P. And whereas in accordance with section seventeen point six eight point oh two oh A of the zoning ordinance, expansion of a non-conforming use requires an approval of conditional use permit. And whereas the planning commission, any type three procedure per section seventeen point one oh four point oh four oh, whereas reviews conditional use applications and whereas per section seventeen point seven two point oh two oh of the zoning ordinance, planning commission may require annual or less frequent renewal of conditional use permits. And whereas based upon the criterion standards, staff recommended the planning commission grant approval of conditional use permit twenty-four dash zero zero one, improperly identified as thirty-six dash three W dash twenty-two VB, tax lot seventy-seven hundred. And whereas said recommendation includes the following conditions of approval: use, residential dwelling, permits, the applicant shall receive all required permits from the Jackson County Building Division. Incropedate, the proposed carport expansion shall not encroach upon the neighboring property located at forty-three Garden Hill Street. Therefore, be it resolved that the planning formation of the city of Gold Hill approves conditional use permit twenty-four dash zero zero, zero one, excuse me, twenty-four dash zero one, subject to the findings of fact and conditions of approval. This resolution is effective May fifteenth, twenty twenty-four. And will be roll call again?
You need a motion to adopt the resolution twenty-four da, uh, CUP twenty-four dash zero one.
So do we have a motion to adopt the amendment, should we adopt CUP twenty-four dash zero one? Okay, I'll second. And then just say. We have roll call, please.
Commissioner Warwick?
Yes.
Commissioner Skinner?
Yes.
Commissioner Keesley?
Yes.
Commissioner Hammond?
Yes.
Motion carries.
We close? We close?
Yes, uh, reclosing, we're now closing the public hearing for resolution CUP twenty-four dash zero one.
And reopening.
We're gonna reopen the public hearing for the zoning code amendment. Don't want to start from the top again? Probably.
Yes.
Okay. This time we're gonna open the public hearing to consider zoning code amendment twenty-four dash zero one. The amendment is designed to address standards and criteria regarding mobile food vendors. Specific sections proposed for modifications are seventeen point two eight point oh two oh J, seventeen point three two point oh two oh A three F, seventeen point three six oh two oh C two D, and seventeen point three six oh nine oh H. Minor changes to table seventeen point two six oh two oh C are also recommended. We will begin hearing with the staff report followed by a public comment and planning commissioner's deliberation. Um, objections to jurisdiction? Is there anyone present who wishes to challenge the authority of the commission to hear this matter? Uh, abstentions, conflict of interest? Do any commissioners wish to abstain from participating, mishearing, or declare a potential conflict of interest? No, I don't. Probably commercials on the, that qualify. Uh, prior ex parte contact by commissioners, are there any commissioners who wish to disclose discussions, contacts, biases, or other ex parte information they ever seen prior to this meeting regarding the occupation? Oh, okay. Um, staff report.
Sure.
All right.
Okay, good evening commissioners. I'm Chandel Clark again, land use planner for Rogue Valley Council of Governments. And this evening, we're gonna discuss amendments to the zoning code to address mobile food vendors. Um, as identified in the opening statements, the, uh, amendments touch several sections of the code. Uh, language, you'll see language that's lined through and that language is recommended for removal. You'll see language that is bold and underlined and that's recommended for inclusion. Um, noted in exhibit A. It's where you'll find your materials. Um, table seventeen twenty-six oh two oh C. That would be the first page after exhibit A. Staff is recommending that temporary mobile food vendors be permitted use in the downtown general commercial and public zones. While mobile food vendors, mobile food pods and mobile food courts be permitted uses in the downtown and general commercial zones. Sections seventy-two, twenty-eight oh two oh J. Staff is recommending adding temporary mobile food vendors to allow uses. Seventeen thirty-two oh two oh A three sub F. Staff is recommending adding temporary mobile food vendors, mobile food vendors, mobile food pods, and mobile food court to allow uses. And we go to seventeen thirty-six oh two oh C two sub D. Staff is recommending adding temporary mobile food vendors, mobile food vendors, mobile food pods, and mobile food court to allow uses. And finally, where the bulk of the changes are located. This is seventeen thirty-six zero nine zero H and, um, these I apologize that the previous pages weren't numbered, these are numbered. Um, so we can get through those. Um, changes are proposed as regards to definitions, standards, and criteria. I thought we should go through this, you know, line by line pretty much so that, um, you're, you assure you agree with the recommended language. So we start off on page one of seventeen thirty-six oh nine oh H, and that's with the definitions.
Sure.
So we have four different types of mobile food vendors. We have temporary mobile food vendor, mobile food vendor, which is, uh, seen to be more semi-permanent, mobile food pods, and mobile food courts. Um, you know, each of these, so a temporary mobile food vendor, um, and I can read this for you if you'd like, as any structured trailer, vehicle, wagon, or other similar device which is used for the purpose of preparing, processing, or converging food for immediate consumption as drive-in, drive-through, curb, or boffin service and is located on a single parcel of privately owned land and is removed at the end of the business day or as a cessation of a special event. That differs from a mobile food vendor and that this is not associated with a special event and is expected to be semi-permanent. Uh, one mobile vendor is permitted per site unless included in an application for a mobile food pod or a mobile food court. Mobile food pod is two to three mobile food vendors located on a single parcel and it's not associated with a special event and it is also expected to be semi-permanent. And a mobile food court is a group of four to twelve mobile food vendors located on a single parcel and not associated with a special event and expected to be semi-permanent. And then at the bottom of page one, move towards standards and criteria for temporary mobile food vendor. So A, uh, they may be permitted in the commercial downtown and public zones through a type one planning procedure. Uh, the applicant is to submit a zoning clearance form and a site plan drawn to scale. We then get into all the elements that the site plan shall include. Uh, dimensions of the unit. Uh, enclosed no more than a hundred twenty-eight square feet. We talk about trash receptacles, restroom facilities, proposed lighting, outdoor equipment and accessories, and signage. Um, we go down to C, and please stop me if you have any questions. If there's anything uh, you'd like to discuss further. Um, C, it just talks about that if it's, if it's on a property not owned by the applicant, we get the, the owner's consent. Um. If more than one temporary mobile food vendor is located on the same site, the unit shall be spaced ten feet apart. Uh, city business is, uh, city business license is required and so is a Jackson County environmental health permit. And H talks about, um, if you're located adjacent to a public or private walkway, the minimum remaining obstruct, unobstructed walkway shall be six feet. Then on page three, where outdoor seating or an M, outdoor seating shall be allowed subject to the following. Uh, seating shall be located such that it does not impede traffic or pedestrian passage. Uh, where the unit abuts or is adjacent to a residential zone, outdoor seating shall be allowed between the hours of eight AM and eight PM. Uh, where the unit abuts or is adjacent to a residential zone, outdoor seating shall be allowed between the hours of eight A M and eight P M. Uh, we're on O, uh, temporary mobile food vendor shall be fully self-contained. However, temporary connection to power is permitted, provided extension cords are covered or screened to prevent tripping hazards. Generators used for operation of the temporary food vendor shall be consistent with applicable fire code. P, no unit shall dispose of oil, grease, or waste on the lot. Uh, Q, no waste shall be discharged into the city storm drain system directly or indirectly. And S, uh, temporary mobile food vendor shall leave the permitted location at the end of the business day or the cessation of a special event. Temporary mobile food vendors may not return to the same location without securing an additional type one permit from the city of Gold Hill. So those are our temporary folks. Then we move into our more semi-permanent. So we're now on page four. And we've got the mobile food uh, vendor standards and criteria. And you'll notice that there's a lot of repeats um, in some of this language, so um, such as the unit dimensions, uh, a hundred twenty eight square feet, setbacks to property lines, trash receptacles, the restroom facility, um, proposed lighting, uh, proposed lighting for the mobile food vendor because it is semi-permanent. Uh, the lighting shall be downcast and unobtrusive and the lighting shall be removed, unplugged, or otherwise turned off at the end of each business day. And also, uh, we're allowing outdoor equipment and accessories such as tables, chairs, canopies, tents, and other amenities for guests. Um, B, we just added the word vendor, if the mobile food vendor is located uh, adjacent to the public or private walkway, the minimum remaining unobstructed walkway shall be six feet. F, we just added the word vendor. H, city business license is required and Jackson County environment health permit. We're on page five, public ordinance. And I wanna go down to M. Uh, uh, the language is E-stricken, uh, it talks about seating, seating not impeding traffic or pedestrian passage. Again, it talks about um, on O, the mobile vendor shall be self-contained. If not, it shall, the unit shall connect to permanent utilities through the issuance of proper jurisdictional permits. Again, uh, no unit shall dispose of oil, grease, or waste on the lot. No waste shall be discharged in the city's storm drain system directly or indirectly. Okay. On the mobile food pods, this is page six. So this is all the language that we're adding, this is all new language, um, because we didn't have mobile food pods or courts before, so. Um, you can have it on privately owned property in the commercial and downtown zone through a type two planning procedure. Um, that's a staff level procedure but that the, the decision is noticed, so uh, neighbors and other agencies have the ability to comment. Whereas a type three permit goes to the planning commission. Um, talks about, you know, they must submit a zoning clearance form and site plan, goes into what the site plan must entail. Talks about the minimum distance between units uh, shall be ten feet. And in this one, it's different, um, units with the mobile food pod shall connect to all public utilities through the issuance of proper jurisdictional permits. So we've got a greater number of users, we want them to be, and they're semi-permanent to permanent, we want them to connect to utilities. So for water, uh, site dedicated water master, master water meter is required. Private water line extensions from the master meter to each vendor shall be required for the uniform plumbing code. Um, we also have them connect to the sanitary sewer system. Underground power shall be stepped each unit. And units within the mobile food pod shall meet all standards and criteria as required for the mobile food vendors. So it ties back to the original, the mobile food vendor, and if there's anything that was not listed within the mobile food pod, we rely upon the remaining items from the mobile food section. So mobile food courts. Uh, so mobile food courts, of course, this is the four to twelve units. Um, also semi-permanent to permanent. This is on privately owned property with the owner's consent, and this is a type three planning decision. So this would come before the planning mission. Um, being a type three planning procedure.
Yeah.
Uh, same process, they complete the zoning clearance form and site plan. Talks about the unit dimensions, traffic receptacles, restroom facilities, uh, proposed lighting again, shall be uh, downcast and unobtrusive, shall be removed, unplugged, or otherwise turned off at the end of each business day. Talks about the outdoor equipment and accessories. Uh, minimum distance between the mobile food units within the court shall be ten feet. Um, and utilities, the units within the mobile food court shall connect to all public utilities, just like the mobile food pod. And again, it ends with units within the mobile food court shall meet all standards and criteria as required for mobile food vendors. Cause they're really separate vendors, but it's a, it's a court because of number.
Yeah.
That was a lot of reading.
Um, okay, so that completes the staff report, um, do we have uh, any public comments? And, um, so at this time, I'm gonna close the public hearing. And planning commission can be liberated. For any questions. So I from what I've heard, one of the, the main drivers of this whole zone, uh, zoning change was um, our current code says mobile food vendors have to be three hundred feet apart, was that?
Correct.
Okay, so, which doesn't.
Doesn't allow more than one on a part property generally.
Doesn't make a lot of sense because it, that's the whole purpose of the food court.
Right.
Yeah. So this will allow, so that, again, the existing code says it couldn't be within three hundred feet.
Yeah, I mean, I think we're basically going to the state, the idea is that food courts are good. Right, we wanna encourage that, which seems like a, a position for me, but.
Right.
One thing, but I have a couple of, on the
Sure.
Um, on the generators, one thing I'm concerned about is noise, can we put in a noise? Stipulation?
Certainly.
Cause
The generators are only on the temporaries, correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
Those are the ones that leave at the end of the day?
So that would be something like for Goldust Day.
Correct.
Or, or, or something you can't run in, I, I'm just, I'm just worried about a bunch of generators in a, in a
Right. So a food court or a food pod had to be connected to utilities, so there's not a generator in that circumstance?
Or And, and so, and maybe, so maybe it didn't, problems, that is the temporary, is that, is that a, a it does have a cutoff, cutoff for time? Eight, was it eight P M?
There's a general state noise ordinance at ten P M. There's not necessarily enforcement.
Yeah.
But that is, generally speaking, a uh, provision of law that noise can't go above a certain decibel after ten P M.
Yes, I thought, question I had was about the size, and part of the reason, I was thinking about the, um, the common block, uh, in, in Medford. Because it has a, um, twenty foot container as the, the outdoor here.
Okay.
And, and that, a twenty foot container and they're nine feet, but basically
Hundred eighty square feet.
Yeah, and so that if that, at a hundred and twenty eight feet, you couldn't do that, and I think that's
Right.
Well, I don't see why.
Limiting it to a hundred and twenty eight.
That's, I think that's, I think a twenty foot container is, I mean, that's, we're gonna have a, that's a reasonable sort of food court thing that we don't wanna cut off.
Okay.
I've also seen some that have a permanent structure and then they have the actual vendors around them. So I believe that structure would go under a permitting process for a permanent structure. And then those would, the court would be the vendors. So I don't know that it's prohibited, like, say I had a property in the zoning down there and I wanted to put a pole barn with a restaurant inside or serving the al- alcohol, and then outside I have twelve food carts. Everybody comes in and seats in the general area, it's not the food vendors.
Right.
Um, since they're not a food vendor, they would not necessarily fall under the hundred and twenty eight square foot. But you're saying that they actually use a storage pod, is that?
Well, yeah, I mean, they're, at Common Block, they're, I mean, there's this really nice it's a, it's a great outdoor facility and it's, that, that's based on a twenty foot shipping container. And the thing about shipping containers is that if you're in Gold Hill, they're really, I mean, they're bond proof, but they're you know, so it's like ooh, that's a, I mean, I, I, I hate to, I hate to have something that, you know, that it says, well, you can't do that because yeah, because it's, it's such a good solution to a problem.
Would the storage container be considered mobile?
Well, containers are mobile, yeah, because you, you can just pick, you know, they, they move out trucks. Move, I mean, they're, they're both, I, I, I mean, they're, they're semi-permanent.
But mobile, I'm just thinking through the terminology of most food carts or mobile vendors actually have wheels that the trailer can come in out, not all of them have to go. They could be like a coffee stand.
Yeah.
That is without wheels.
Yeah, in our definition, it says structure from a trailer, from a vehicle, from a wagon, or similar device.
So, so one thing that is an option, if you look on page two of uh, section four in your book, there are some proposed options for you to look at. If if there are, um, usually if there's minor changes or something that's not a significant change to the whole thing that's presented, amendments could be recommended. And it not require to go back through the whole process.
Mm-hmm.
If it's substantial changing of the whole ordinance that would be presented, then we'd have to kind of go back through noticing process. But I think if there was something specific about this square footage, a amendment could be made to consider a different number there and it would not require us to start from scratch.
Sure, yeah, I mean, I I think it'd be great to have a, like, hundred and eighty, because that's, that's twenty foot, not, yeah, that would be, that would be twenty foot. Yeah, something like that, whatever, yeah.
I mean, is that a standard building, is it over two hundred square feet yet that I've heard before? Well, if you're gonna build a shed, I, I, you gotta that's okay.
So as far as I understand,
Mm-hmm.
Um, can you remind the commission of the three planning types that you, the, the levels had? And does that change with the square footage with what was just proposed?
Square, no, the square footage was the same for all three planning types. We had it at a hundred and twenty eight, and that's because that was already what was in the code. And then when I looked around at different codes, that seemed to be where most, most folks landed. Uh, I'm not sure why, um, but that's, that's where, um, that number came from, was from existing code and then doing the research.
Could there be to, um, off of what the, the commissioner was recommending, could there be an added subsection that would say if there's a central structure, it is not restricted to the hundred and twenty eight square feet?
I don't see how that would, I'm not, I'm not online. There's a central structure.
So like, um, there is, um, a place in Salem, I think it's called The Porch. And it has a pole barn, and that's where the restrooms are located, that's where all the tables are located, that's where all the beverages are located. None of the food vendors, the food vendors change. They're, they're located five to ten feet apart, all the way down both sides of the structure.
Hmm.
And that one went through a building permit processing for that structure in the middle, so none of the vendors sell beverages. That's done as a central location, like, and I was hearing, I, but maybe I misunderstood what the commissioner was saying about this one pod that is the, the beer pod, it's kind of like, that's the, the hub of that, you know, or do you want all of them to be twenty foot by nine foot? If, or can they be as mobile? Cause you can't just pick up a trailer without having a crane pull it up and out.
Yeah.
And it's a, it's a maximum square footage, so to not exceed. So.
Yeah, that, uh, could we, could we amend it to one, to one eighty? Without, to leave?
I think so, yes.
In the courts or in all of them?
If, and not as a, maybe not as a temporary, but, but for the um, well, one, I mean, there's only one, like, the standings, that one, and that, that is if you, you can do a lot with a twenty foot container. And that, and that's, those are fairly standard at, at events. Because they're cheap and they're indestructible. And they work, they work decent.
What are they called again?
So twenty foot shipping.
Yeah, twenty foot forty.
Yeah. Yeah, you definitely define it because there's various quality. The containers have been very quite.
But they Man, there's so much standard, he's got shipping and everything.
Yeah, there, and you can make, you can make food pods. They make cool.
It looks like the standard width of all the shipping containers, regardless of the length, is eight feet.
Yes.
Uh, and then eight feet, six inches tall, it looks like, or is that reversed?
Problem.
Uh, so the twenty foot one is technically nineteen feet, ten point five inches by eight feet by eight feet, six inches, and I, I'm not sure which dimension is
Five hundred sixty.
Yeah.
That's not a major change. And that's, maybe it's a little more strictly than my eighty, but that would allow that, yeah.
It would allow a twenty foot container if it's twenty by eight.
Right.
So I just wanted to make sure to point out that, that of your three options, one, you can uh, recommend that it go forward as is. You can recommend minor amendments. Or you can send it back to the planner to do major amendments or changes.
That's the, I mean, if, if that's the only change I would like to see, this is the Yeah.
Well, I, I like, um, so, there is a more question, what, what would the uh, coffee shop down here be, the drive-through, rebel roasters, what would, what, what are they considered to be?
Mobile food vendor.
Food vendor.
Has their permanent fixture? And there's one on the person.
Right. Well, I like, and the other thing I like is the requirements for especially hook up to sewer. And utilities, now, is, is that gonna cover? Is that, does, does this proposed revision cover everybody that uh, might come into town other than uh, uh, temporaries that would set up for like, um, Goldust? Does the, does the requirement to hook up to sewer? Is that gonna apply to everybody?
Correct, it applies, it applies in the
It's gonna mostly apply to everybody except for
The temporary.
The absolute temporary. Okay.
Because
Yeah.
I am wondering if one other friendly amendment would be appropriate that on all of the plumbing friendly amendment would be appropriate that on all of the plumbing, that it not just also applied to the uniform plumbing code, but also the Oregon Health Authority Safe Water. If that wording could be added to each of those portions, they dictate safe water consumption, it's a water, we're under the licensing of Oregon Health Authority. So not just the plumbing requirements, but also the regulations of Oregon Health Authority Safe Water, Safe Drinking Water Program, uh, which is where the backflow or cross connection protections come into play. Would be a recommendation I would suggest if you guys were to amend, and I don't think that's significant enough, that would send it back to the drawing board.
I agree.
One of the question, what's, what is the, the restroom?
We, we allow honey buckets. They just have to have a facility that would allow. I will tell you, we just had a couple city councilors from neighboring cities come and want to see this code. And they impose a lot more restrictions. They wanted to get into the level of colors that were allowed for canopies. They wanted to get into, uh, permanent restrooms versus porta potties were not allowed. And this is where we get the flexibility of the culture here versus the neighboring communities.
Yeah.
Um.
Well, permanent restroom, but permanent facilities would be compromised for probably a lot of, you know, somebody's gonna put a, put a mobile.
Historically, what our code has currently is because brick and mortar built businesses did not want the competition with temporary food carts. Most codes were very restrictive until COVID. COVID changed how our culture and society viewed food vendors. With the temporary eating at home and the restrictions, and so they became more commonplace and popular. And then we get calls regularly at the city of people interested, uh, and, um, our code currently is restrictive enough that it's not necessarily that. So this is a proposal that we thought why it was initiated with the council is that it was too restrictive. And as far as going over the code, uh, possibilities, looking at other things that were out there, what would be a good good governance that's permissive, but also keeping in mind that our ultimate goal is the safety of our community. So doing it in a way that is also being mindful of safety, thus the electrical, the sewer, the water needing to be safe.
Well, that's definitely even more bearing to what you just said.
That's why, that's what you see. Chandel and I spent a lot of time looking at the wording of this. So if the commission is looking to move it forward and wants to amend, uh, I heard suggestions of changing the, uh, not the temporary, I wouldn't recommend the temporary one because they fall under different transportation requirements as well. Um, but the, the semi, the mobile one, the pod and the court, if those were the ones that you wanted to consider changing the dimensions on. And then I would also ask if you would please consider adding Oregon Health Authority
Yeah.
regulations on safe water.
So we'd be looking at, uh, just mobile food pot, and mobile food court's at a hundred and sixty square feet.
Uh, mobile food vendor, the mobile food pod, and the mobile food court.
I heard Commissioner Keesling say the single one too, cause he knows the location that just has the one thing there.
So. Question is, put all that in, into a motion, those recommended changes.
Do you want to take one amendment at a time and make a motion to amend, and then make a motion to move forward as amended?
Uh, yeah. So, does somebody want to make a motion regarding the?
Make a motion to amend, uh, the square feet from a hundred and twenty eight to a hundred and sixty. You know, but the, uh, the temporary. Five, five, for the temporary.
Is there a second?
Five with a second.
Further discussions?
And further discussion.
Yeah, it's awesome.
Moving to the second, the session, we'll have a roll call.
Commissioner Warwick?
Uh, yes.
Commissioner Skinner?
Yes.
Commissioner Hammond?
Hello? Me?
Yeah.
Gotta yell at me.
Commissioner Keesling? Thank you, commission carries.
Um, so then we want a motion to add, um, compliance with Oregon Health Authority.
Deep drinking.
Safe drinking water standards.
Yeah, criteria or regulations. And vendor, yeah.
We want to get the word in. We want to get the word in, is that?
So under the water sections of each of them, that it say the Uniform Plumbing Code and Oregon Health Authority Safe Drinking Water Requirements.
Yeah.
Or you can just simply say Oregon Health Authority requirements, but it is, um, safe drinking water.
We could say Oregon Health Authority requirements, okay. Um, so I'm gonna make a motion that we add to, uh, make a motion to, we add additional language stating that, uh, water connections need to include, um, Oregon Health Authority Safe Drinking Water.
Requirements.
Requirements. Do we want to add that to all four? Or just all but the temporaries?
All but the temporary, the temporary should be fully self-contained.
Make that motion, uh, and amend that motion to include all but the temporaries, if that makes. I mean, I'm starting that discussion. Okay, sounds good. Uh, moving to the second, uh, roll call, please.
Keesling.
Commissioner Warwick?
Yes.
Commissioner Skinner?
Yes.
Commissioner Keesling?
Yes.
Commissioner Hammond?
Yes.
Heard you that time.
So now it makes it easy for you that if you are, if you don't want any other amendments, then you can make a motion to uh, recommend the, the option to move it towards the council as amended, and that includes what you've already amended.
Okay, so, um. Well, we've got three possible series. Now, is, is two considered?
Yes.
Part of the, okay, so I'll move it to the planning commission, recommend approval to the city council of zoning code and the twenty four, as zero one, as modified at the public hearing on April twenty seventh. I'll save it for that, I'll save it.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, any further discussion? We're still right there, now, we've been on the commission three years. So then moving to the second, our roll call is.
Commissioner?
Yes.
Mr. Skinner? Commissioner Keesling? Commissioner Hammond?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. And, to the meeting.
I have one item for you guys before we would close the meeting.
Okay.
So, we meet generally, we're going to be intentional to meet every month. Uh, but in June, the state of Oregon has declared June nineteenth a holiday, which falls on our meeting night. So you will have seen today, I sent a calendar cancellation for the meeting on June nineteenth. It's, it's a holiday, we're closed. And we will meet the week after, which for June will be the fourth Wednesday in the month. And you should already have a calendar invite for that, if you don't let me know, because the computers are being funny right now with our emails. So just to clarify, in, um, this next month, we are going to, uh, meet on June twenty sixth, here at six P M.
Sure. Uh, so let's start our patient on the next meeting, um, and with that, we will adjourn.